I appreciate you coming out. Anybody else have any flowers that they want to have built up for the mayor's session? Alright, thank you. Anybody else have any cards? Alright, hey lovely lady, will you take this forward?
Hey Jared, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Can we give a round of applause to Jared for hosting us, please?
Come here big guy, give me a hug. Okay, take it away.
Alright, so just like the last format, we're gonna give two minutes to the candidates to introduce themselves. Looks like we're starting with Ron Cooper.
Good evening Lakeway and holy smokes for Apollo. I am so overwhelmed by the support that I have received along with my wife and my two daughters. The signs are everywhere and I've heard good and bad, but I want you guys to all know it's all good because look at this room. This is what we're talking about, a bottom-up level of city involvement. This is what it should be about. I really enjoy the participation that you guys all have endured over the last four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, two years. I've really enjoyed campaigning with Tom. It's not easy standing up here and so I wanted to say thank you for doing this the way that it should be done. There are some things going on in our city that we should not be participating in. The cancel culture has got to stop. The way that we are treating each other, the conjecture, the lack of understanding and a lack of compassion, that's not a culture that is of Lakeway. And as your mayor, I want to make sure that we stop that and we participate more cleanly. How we interact with our local businesses over the next several years is going to have a big impact on who Lakeway is and what Lakeway represents. The 620 expansion is going to be devastating to our local businesses. As that expansion becomes more prevalent, I want you guys to all participate with your local businesses. It is so important that we shop local and that we participate that way so that we can get past that level of conjecture for these businesses. Again, I'm Ron Cooper. I'm so humbled and pleased to have you guys all here today and I look forward to being your next Lakeway mayor. Thank you.
It's always great to be up and to talk to the residents and it's always good to see people come out. The bottom line here is participation and if you're not ready to participate and engage with your city government, we made the comment today, somebody said at the polls after they voted, if you don't vote and you don't have a, you shouldn't complain. And I pointed out that that was exactly wrong. Everybody complains anyway. Last year, two years ago, I received, I paid the job, I received 2,400 votes, but I had well over 4,000 people telling me what to do. My career has always been in public service, one way or the other. I started way back in Cub Scouts. And then later on, age 17, I stood on the plane and I swore an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. That oath had no expiration date and it continues to this day. I served a full military career and then I served a full career in the energy business of specialization in finance and risk management. So that's the business background what I bring here. I also bring to you 23 months of discipline service as your mayor, where we have accomplished every goal I set out to do two years ago. Every promise I made has been delivered on. And what we have to do though is realize that there's still plenty more to do. There is a lot of work yet to do. So I like to say, promises made, promises kept, there's still more to do. So if you don't know, I am a graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point. Where I have a Bachelor of Science of Engineering. I also graduated Duke University's The Future Business School, where I have an MBA. And I have been your mayor for 23 months. I have enjoyed almost every minute of it. And I would like to also commend, as Ron knows, this is not easy and it's really a good thing and this is a labor of love. Because we do not do this for the big bucks you pay us. Thank you very much and thank you for being on here tonight.
Okay, so here we go, first question.
Excuse me, as the mayor, I note the presence of a quorum. However, the city council will not do any business tonight and there are no items on the agenda. Thank you. We did not post a quorum notice. I didn't know we'd have so many city council members here.
Thank you mayor. This is the part where we don't clap, okay? Maintain silence, maintain decorum. That's the good word. Thank you very much Jennifer, decorum. Respect, honor, integrity and all that stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna elaborate on this one because it was a short question. But obviously I think we can all agree that we're suffering from the lack of service and we're workers in the area. I personally don't like waiting 45 minutes for a check at a restaurant. But we'd love to get your thoughts as a group here on the affordable housing, especially for those who serve Lakeway.
Yeah, it's a big issue. I got a mother-in-law here that's struggling to find a comprehensive, to live more economical. She works very hard, much like many of you. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what your perspective is, we didn't think about this 20 years ago. You know, there could have been some mixed income housing projects in some of these developments. There's some things that we could have done. Unfortunately now we're at a bit of a financial land crisis as the mayor's pointed out. You know, the water tap fees are very expensive and where we put them, you know, we have a sort of a not in my backyard temperament associated with, you know, structures like that. You know, but as Tom and I will tell you, you know, if it comes to city council and it's comprehensive, we're gonna represent to the best of our abilities the once-needed expectations of the city. Thank you.
Okay, just a reminder, if you'll bring the microphones up parallel to the ground, that will be helpful. Yeah, we're not, you know. Yeah, right.
Alright, so let's talk about workforce housing. We, as Ron pointed out, we did not make certain decisions years ago that would have gone beyond sort of R1 housing in some small number of condominiums out at the World of Tennis. So what we've done over the last 23 months as your mayor is we have redone our zoning ordinances so that our city is now, has an intact zoning system from R1 to R9, which is single-family homes all the way up to sort of medium-net city apartments. That means that the city of Lakeway in the last two years has become compliant with federal law and we are not subject to an attack from an outside fair housing group that would say you have to build housing inside the city. We have protected ourselves legally from that attack. And we've had two or three of those attacks over the last year itself contradicting or trying to force zoning upon us or force housing upon us. And then the biggest thing we, so that gets us there, but as Ron has said, the issue isn't workforce housing, it's water for apartment development. And until we solve the water problem, then any developer is not going to be able to go forward because every big apartment complex starts with a $6 million water cost and that makes workforce housing very hard to do. So that's where we are. We've protected ourselves, but we still have a fundamental challenge for any developer and that is water.
Okay, moving on to the next question is, what are your policies on crime? Do you support increasing our police forces necessary? How does your policy is different from the Austin District Attorney and why? And it looks like, are you?
Okay, so crime is fairly straightforward, right? I mean, we don't support crime, so. Anyway, so we have 35 support officers right now and at the current time in the upcoming budget, we are planning on making changes to the police force and that change has to be figured out. Because what we've done is we've taken a question and said, not what do you want to do for next year's budget, but the command team has been tasked to say, what do you want your police force to look like five years from now and how do we get there? And as you may or may not know, you don't buy police officers one at a time. Because we work in shifts and we patrol and we're present in the city, we are out there and we're either gonna add one or two motor officers or we're gonna add four officers so there's one more officer on each shift. That's sort of the way you add officers. You add officers in amounts of around 200,000 to about a half a million. So we differ completely from the Travis County District Attorney. We take every case down there and unfortunately the Travis County District Attorney frequently declines to prosecute. So if we know they will prosecute on certain drug charges, we write the ticket for misdemeanor drug paraphernalia and let the young guy or young gal go. But if it's a serious crime, it doesn't matter. You get arrested in the city of Lakeway, you get a free trip downtown and you get a mugshot and all the rest of that. So we have a zero tolerance for that stuff out here. That's just the way we're gonna continue to patrol. We are an active patrolling department. That lieutenant is in charge of our active patrolling department and they do a great job. Thank you.
Crime is very serious discussion because of our neighbors and how it's bleeding into our community. You've heard people talk about Lakeway being in a bubble. What they're really referring to is, you know, we're a soft target. We gotta allow an open conversation with our police chief and his staff about proactive policing measures that harden this target, right? Make a soft target harder and that comes with identifying the issues and then making sure that everybody that wants to commit crime in Lakeway understands that it's not in our town and we're gonna be very strong on that message. As mayor said, our position, and my position, from the AD of Austin is diametrically opposed from what he wants. He doesn't want to participate in crime or making people accountable for their actions. We've gotta find a way to work with them or get him out so that we can find somebody to do the job that's more in line with what we need and what our expectations are. Thank you.
During the 620 expansion, would the city be willing to give Lakeway businesses a tax discount to help them through construction?
I think that's a great, I think that's a great question. You know, it comes down to identifying the needs of our local businesses, getting those needs to the public, having you guys respond to that need and then us at council representing the expectations and wants of the public. And if the community wants us to evaluate a taxation benefit for our local businesses, I would be more than happy to receive that comments, concerns and vote on council to participate, whatever you guys have as your understanding of what we should do. And it's really for a council decision on one vote, but I will work with council to develop a comprehensive understanding to meet your guys' expectations. Thank you.
That's actually a very good question. It's something that many of you sort of inside baseball stuff, you may not know. We actually have an economic development committee that we established and populated early in my term. It's recently had a chance to do a whole lot more data analysis. We know all of the businesses that would be affected by the 620 expansion. That's why we're working so hard on the 620 zoning overlay to make sure that we don't put a business out of operation because we don't give them the proper change to zoning that allows them to stay in business. So we're gonna do all of that and then if the economic development committee studies the issue and makes a recommendation forward, they'll be able to come to council as a citizen volunteer committee and say, we think another tool is, here's how many hundreds of thousands of dollars or we need to allocate to a project that would allow businesses to stay in place. But that's a, we have a whole process. We built the committee, we've serviced it, we have given them the resources to do data collection and management and now we can also start to assign tasks. The biggest task they have right now is finding new businesses to come in, but we can also assign them the task of identifying economic incentives. That is a classic role for an economic development committee and that's why we put it in place two years ago. So thank you.
Okay, many voters seem to be concerned about the Lakeway Airport. Can you explain a little bit of the history and why this is a key issue of concern or why neighbors may disagree about it?
I don't know that it's that much of a concern. I think people want to make sometimes a thing an issue. It's an issue, but it's not. The Lakeway Airport predates the city of Lakeway. It was part of the Lakeway Resort. It used to be just a dirt strip. Now it's covered. It has an independent board. They're responsible as the property owner for violations or the way it's operated, maintained and conducted. You know, they had a comprehensive zoning review that was a result of repeated complaints to the city about certain operations occurring. The result of that was an aviation committee that was formed and a brand-new aviation ordinance that's been in effect. And I think we've had only two zoning violations since that time. So I think it's a big improvement. The airport isn't going anywhere. Nobody's trying to do anything other than make sure it is safely and responsibly operated. It is after all, an airport in the middle of a city of 22,000 people. It's not an airport. It is an airport for general aviation enthusiasts or as they say, the coffee and high-energy drink crowd.
See, that's where the mayor and I just disagree. The Lakeway Airport is a very important part of our community and how we facilitate relationships with our internal partners and our nonprofits and not-for-profits is not to attack them at city council. It's to work with them comprehensively, meet their expectations, to facilitate a growth that we can all be proud of. And we did not just put a committee together, right? That was at the behest of it getting put on council and then them asking for a committee to be put together. So I think we have some issues that we gotta work past. I think the narrative that's being disseminated and the people that were, as a result of that narrative, still feel like they've been treated a little unfairly by the city. And we cannot treat people like that. If we're going to have a relationship with individuals in this city and if we have an issue with them at city council, we need to work closely with them and identify the things that we want them to come in compliance before we take it to council. There's a way of doing business and it's not being done currently and as your mayor, I want to make sure that happens.
We know it takes a village to raise a child, obviously. There seems to be a disconnect between city leadership and the Lake Travis Island Steve leadership. What will you do to build a relationship and work together that will benefit our students, teachers and families?
We have to introduce globally, regionally with some of our external partners, meaning the relationship is a global issue. The superintendent called me into his office a few weeks ago and we spent two hours chatting. And the first thing he asked me is, Ron, if you get elected, will I have a relationship with you? I haven't had a relationship with the mayor since Sandy Cox. And it's a narrative that I've heard over and over and over again as I've met people like the pastor of the Lakeway church, for example. I told him and I reassured him that he will have a relationship with the Lakeway mayor. I will develop rapport with him and I will help with critical thinking exercises to help him succeed so that he can help us succeed. I've got two daughters in that school district. Many of you have children in that school district. And the conjecture in the relationship is not representing of us. We can disagree on where that school goes, but we can do it in a respectful manner and that's not what's happening and it's not good for Lakeway. Thank you.
Okay, this is one where Ron and I clearly disagree. Paul Norton and I talk probably once a month, either at a chamber of Congress event or online or as we plan events or work. But Paul Norton, the superintendent, is not my counterpart. My counterpart is John Olbe, the president of the Lake Travis Independent School Board. He is an elected official. The superintendent, while very important, is staff who takes guidance from the school board. In my view, the school board was not very good at talking to the city of Lakeway. No school board member talked to any member of city council in advocacy of their school project, not one. And so when it came to us and we had to keep pushing back, it wasn't for lack of communication or lack of relationship. It was they didn't want to hear the answer no. And so that's what they were told. I've already said that one of the things I thought was amazing and we had a candidate meeting for the new school board trustees who are going in unopposed and we said, we're not gonna make this mistake going forward. I said, I have regularly scheduled meetings with every other elected official except for school board trustees. And going forward, the two new trustees and myself committed, we would meet at least quarterly to go over our duties as elected officials. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mental health is at the forefront of our nation. How will you support our police department to better deal with certain situations?
Okay, so that's a really good question. For those of you who don't know, and I'm not doing this part-time job as the mayor, I am the vice president of the Engage Hill Foundation, which is a local mental health charity where we've been raising money to provide resources particularly aimed at our high schoolers to get mental health therapy and training that they need. We're also providing training and resources to the high school so that they have the benefits. In terms of our officers, we already have a very comprehensive program. There is a police chief's program for first responders when there are critical incidents, as well as every officer has to go through annual training for mental health training and evaluation. And all of that material is fully funded out of the school, out of the city budget so that the officers have the training before they go into a situation and then after a situation. And it doesn't just include the officers. Don't forget, we also have the admin staff. We have our victims advocate. We have the administrators who work with those people. All of those people also need the mental health access that our city provides to our blue and to our dispatchers, the thin line that takes the calls and gets our officers safely. So we're there. I'm doing this in the school and we're already doing it for our officers in uniform. Thanks.
PTSD and mental health are upon us. The distressors of the job are very real. Things that they see, the things they hear impact them. We as a community have got to recognize when one of our guys in blue is struggling. We can have all the programs that we could ever want, but if we don't embody the empathy and the sympathy to recognize when a police officer is struggling, if we don't have the relationship, if we're not actively engaged to pay attention to recognize when somebody is struggling, they may not want the help. They may not participate that way. So hopefully we can rally around our guy who make it so that they understand that we are here for him or her and get the help that they need. But PTSD and mental health is a serious issue for these guys and I want to make sure that we as a community understand that and rally around our guys. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next question. I don't know if this is a fact, but I think some of us do have concerns with Lake Travis and the lack thereof of water about not having enough clean water to support a fast-growing town. What do you think about providing incentives for builders or homeowners to convert their lawn into zero scape?
Just so you guys know, the reason why we don't have water is Tom's fault. There are some zero scape alternatives, you know, the turf that, you know, you look at it, especially when you drive by or even sometimes when you're standing on it, you're like, man, I can't believe this is not real grass. But there's some really bad astroturf out there. So I think if the city, when we look at some hardscapes or some zeroscapes, you know, we want to make sure that it embodies what Lakeway wants, the beautification. You know, you drive past a lot of these communities, they look really nice, you know, really lush grass. A lot of water goes onto those lawns. And so I would be in support of some alternative hardscape or softscapes to make sure that we can mitigate our water. That's a precious commodity and I'm all about that kind of mentality. Thank you.
Okay, so water, it's everything. You know, people think we fight over politics. People think you fight over football rivalries. That ain't nothing like fighting over water, okay? So right now, we have a big struggle. We, the city of Lakeway, are serviced primarily by LCRA and our advocate with LCRA is the Lakeway mud. That's our principal advocate. We, the citizens, the residents, the people who live out here, are also serviced by the Central Texas Water Coalition and they are also our advocate. And so one of the jobs of the mayor is to balance the relationship to keep both your mud happy and your water advocate happy because they both have the opposite interest in terms of re-regulating the Lower Colorado River Authority. I think we've done a very good job of that. Those folks, we all know that they get a fair hearing at the city of Lakeway. They all get a chance to come in and make their presentation. We vote to support L1's bargaining position. We vote to support Joe Carr's fellow positions and I don't know if this is, was a setup question, but council member Mastrangelo, who is in the audience tonight, actually has a proposal in front of council where they're doing the research. Staff is currently researching how to do an alternate landscape ordinance so that we can reduce water. And he said he wanted to bring that to the fore, but for the first two, three months now, the staff work has just not been complete. We haven't been able to come to a full discussion. The city's been studying it for a while and now we're ready to go forward.
Thank you. This is a pretty specific question and I imagine this might be towards you, Tom, is... Unless, Ron, you might have intel on this, but tell us what the FAA and NTSB found when they did an investigation of the fatal crash. Did it have any bearing on the rezoning?
I mean, it's a matter of public record.
And maybe can you shed some light? I don't know if we can extend time, but I think a lot of folks may not...
In 2019, it was a fatal air crash. The aircraft was determined to have, I believe, mechanical failure. It stalled on approach. It crashed. The student pilot was killed. The resulting report said that it was, Flight School was going on. It was a flight school. It was a rental aircraft and the pilot and student involved were not residents of Lake Travis Independent School District so they should have never been on the aircraft. So none of that at the time, I mean, that sparked Mayor Cox's first investigation and review of the airport. So upon doing that, getting that report, she started a zoning review. And then COVID hit and the zoning review was never completed. And then about six months after I became mayor, a series of complaints came about and that's what generated the follow-on airport zoning ordinance, but it wasn't related to the crash. It was a separate event, but that's the history there.
Okay, this you can hope to answer. What is your biggest criticism of Austin's mayor? And then how do you ensure that that doesn't carry over into Lakeway?
We don't do that, right? We don't criticize. That's just not what we do. That's just not what we do. You know, maybe we have, but we shouldn't. So let's just agree that that's not a question that is relevant for us.
I asked it because I'm running out of questions, unless, Tom, you'd like to shed some light on that?
Look, Kirk Watson is the mayor of our largest neighbor, and his success or failure will influence us. So I tried to, I guess my little criticism of the Austin mayor is he does not return calls. I only get calls from staff, and when I was, even when I was down at the Capitol testifying against Austin Energy so that we could get an independent board to do oversight of Austin Energy, where Mayor Watson is the chairman of the board of Austin Energy, they didn't even bother to address us directly. They sent a bunch of staff folks. I, you know, he needs to succeed, otherwise we have a really big problem, and I think we would both agree on that. It'd be nice if he answered the mail.
Okay. All right, this is for both candidates. Do you favor some form of campaign finance in Lakeway? And if yes, do you have specifics, and if no, why? Again, I'm running out of questions, so...
Doesn't mean we can't have more, it's okay. So in terms of campaign finance reform, there are a number of cities in Texas that have implemented different levels of campaign finance reform. I think that, at this point, it's a worthy subject of consideration, but I don't, you know, until, this is the devil in the details. Until you tell me, or until staff develops a legal opinion, or until we have a good basis of law that says what is the type of contribution you wish to limit, or how are you going to limit them, or are you trying to also inadvertently control speech from outside groups, then I would have a hard time saying that I promote or con for finance reform, because this is truly a devil in the details thing. And, you know, frequently, the Supreme Court doesn't get it right the first two times. So I don't expect us to, you know, necessarily hear as candidates pontificate and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm all for this, and this is the reason why."
I agree, you know, this campaign finance reform is tricky. The only thing I can tell you is running a campaign is expensive, and I will take all of your money. You know, getting the word out and going against an incumbent is not easy, okay? And so name recognition and working comprehensively to campaign is expensive. And so that's what I'll say about that. We can look at it further, but campaign reform is a tough one for us to handle.
Thank you for the additional questions from the crowd. Trying to think if I can reword this one a bit, but I'll just read it as is. For those of us that might be new to the community or unaware, potentially, where each of you stand. Who should I vote for to work with LTIS in school education protecting young children in a woke culture of boys versus girls in sports, bathrooms, and changing gender topics?
That was a good question.
I could just stand here for a minute and a half.
I will also take all of your money, and I will not buy as many t-shirts. I think, I mean, I really think, I'm sorry, I think at this point, that issue is going to be fought in the school board. And, you know, I would hate, and I'm just going to say, I don't think the mayor or any elected official should use their office to tell the school board how to do their job. I would not want any member of the school board to tell me how to do my job. We are, by the Texas Constitution, co-equal centers of government. We have the same constitutional authority under the Texas state constitution. And I think that that battle and all of that is going to be fought, and it's going to be divisive, and I, you know, look, we do public safety, parks, we pick up the trash, we fix the potholes, and we run the activity center. That's not very woke, folks, so I'd like to kind of keep us, I'd like to keep us in our lane if we could.
"I am so happy," said, "we need to stay in our lane." That is exactly right. You know, as a father of two daughters, it's tough, you know? I want to raise my children with my wife, with her blessing, of course, to be, you know, assets to themselves, their family and their community. I think we all need to do a great job raising our children and making sure that these assets grow up to be good human beings and participate in local elections and grow into greater things. You know, being woke and all these fun things, you know, as you guys know, I don't get on the internet much, so, or social media. But with that being said, we're going to stick to, you know, the streets and the people and legislation for Lakeway, and we're going to let the school handle their issues on their own.
Appreciate the response. The next one. We can all agree that Lakeway is far different than it was just five years ago. Are you about change or keeping it the same?
More like, could be a year. I'm trying to give one. You know, there's, it's a great question. Five years ago today, we keep going through changes, we look back, you know, is it five years or look back 10 years, 20 years? I guess it depends on who you are and what you've experienced since you've been here. We have an ethos, and we have a culture in Lakeway, and we all want to preserve that. And looking back and kind of making decisions, you know, behind the rudder is not the most effective way to lead a city. My goal is to listen objectively and humbly to the wants, needs, and expectations of the residents of Lakeway. And where we end up, it's us, and we should all be proud of it, as long as it's us. And it's not one individual, it's a collective effort. And that's what I'll say about that, Tom.
So, yes, I, in terms of making Lakeway stay Lakeway, keep the culture, again, this is an issue where I just went down to the state capitol and spent the day testifying on five different bills to stop the legislature from ending our zoning ability. The greatest threat to the city of Lakeway is the Texas state legislature, okay? They would like to change our zoning and say, "You can't have R1 zoning, you can have no zoning, you can't control your commercial properties. If Lakeway doesn't want to have a tattoo parlor, that's too bad, you can have a tattoo parlor." So the legislature would seek to strip Home Rule Cities, which is what we are, of our zoning power, which is our key and core municipal duty as a city council. In terms of where we look in the future, I think we've already sorted to address that. I spoke earlier about revamping zoning ordinances in order to say that we are protected and we can keep our zoning. The second thing is, we have now got a comprehensive goal for what town center will look like. The Legends Development, the Stratus Development, and the Jovi Development will form a commercial and residential town center that will be the nexus of activity in Lakeway for the next 20 years. And if you don't know, those projects total almost $650 million of new investment into our city. That's the size of what we've done at the city council over the last two years, is we have made it so that we, and our future is now determined. Thank you.
Okay. Obviously, a question for both of you, of course. Do you support building shared paths, sidewalks within two miles of our schools?
Yes.
Do you want me to repeat the question? I'm sorry. Okay. Do you support building shared paths and/or sidewalks within two miles of our schools?
Okay, so the question is shared paths, sidewalks within two miles of schools? Yes, I do. In fact, we have a thoroughfare plan that is out there. I mean, we already have a plan to do the interconnectivity. It's simply a matter of how we're going to stage the funding and how much we build every year. If it weren't for the winter storms and having to accelerate the repaving of both Loemen's and Lakeway Boulevard, the funding would have come to the transportation bond for the shared park, the shared paths, excuse me. And instead, we had to defer that further down the road, because we had to, you know, as we say in the Army, you shoot the close target first, and the close target is getting the roads and culverts repaired. But I'm a big supporter that we passed the thoroughfare plan, and all of that work is currently in progress. It's all been laid out, we know exactly where they will be. And it's not just two miles of schools, it's throughout the community at large. It's a very large and comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Next question. What is your position on license plate readers if they can help deter crime?
Yeah, so, man, this dang microphone. License plate readers, we had them in Rough Hollow, it was pretty contentious. You know, at the end of the day, we've got to harmonize the wants, needs, and expectations. You know, you've got a Fourth Amendment right. Some people feel that maybe it's their Fourth Amendment right. You know, who has access to that information? Have we done all we can to safeguard your information? Do you trust, you know, us as a city or the police department with that information? These are all questions that the citizens of Lakeway are going to have to ask and answer and come to a determination. I am for proactive police tools, but what I want to make sure is that it harmonizes the wants, the needs, and the expectations of the city. That's very important to me. You know, we've got a lot of vehicles in Rough Hollow that just keep, you know, disappearing. You know, we've got a lot of theft here. I recognize that. You know, what happens is, is they steal your vehicle, they drive it somewhere like to the airport, and they let it sit for two days to see if you guys are tracking it. And then if nobody picks it up within two days, they take it wherever they take it, you know? So proactive police tools, like the cameras, they're on truckers, wreckers, they're in B Cave, they're in all of the surrounding communities, they're everywhere, just not Lakeway. If you guys want it, we should consider it, if our police chief wants it, we should consider it, and that should be done to the city manager. Thank you.
So, yeah, license plate readers, there's no real data that says they deter crime. There is data that says they help you solve crime and find it likely suspect, but in terms of the question being deterred, they don't deter. The problem with the installation of license plate readers here at Rough Hollow was there were no policies, procedures, or ways to use them. So you would not hand an officer a taser without giving them the training on how to use the taser. The fact is, we handed people license plate readers without any training, policies, or procedures as to how to access or control the license plate readers. And so for that reason, we directed that they be removed. License plate readers are a tool that is available to a peace officer. And for the last two years, we've asked, do they want to make a recommendation to city council in the budget process for the installation of license plate readers? And so far, for the last two years, the recommendation has been no. And so if my officers, if your officers do not recommend installing LPRs throughout the city, there's no reason for us to say, "Hey, I think we should do it." It's an open question, it's a tool, the license officers should have access to the tool if that's what they want, but they have yet to say that they believe that has value to them as an apartment. So that's the background, that's where we are on that.
Thank you. Besides expanding 620, do you have any other ideas to essentially make traffic flow and overall the situation much better?
Everybody fly to where you're going to go. No, there are ways that we can, there are ways that we can make 620 flow a little better. We can time the traffic lights, we can work with Tech Dot to get more of an automated flow of traffic. You know, that's not currently being done. You know, I've asked Kent O'Brien, he was working with Tucker Ferguson, I said, "Hey, you know, are our lights doing everything they can for us?" And the answer is no. You know, currently, B Cave has a contract with Tech Dot to maintain those lights. I think we should consider that, and then we should work more with Tech Dot, every opportunity that we can, so that we start speaking their language. Because here soon, we're about to really need those tools to communicate effectively with them for that 620 expansion. You know, maybe some cameras on 620 where you guys can log in on, you know, in the morning and just see kind of what traffic looks like. Things like that may be more comprehensive that we should consider, and again, council's ready for that.
Well, just to correct the issue in some areas, just, no, B Cave took over all of the traffic lights in B Cave from Tech Dot because they paid a huge sum of money to get control. And so if we're willing to spend a few million dollars to get control of the traffic lights, that's always an option. In the meantime, also to be clear, we actually do have a working relationship with Tech Dot, and I don't know if you know this, but every day, the Tech Dot traffic engineers drive down through our city and confirm timing. And I often get a call from Tech Dot saying, "Mayor Kilgore, we've identified a timing issue at this location." And they will stop and send a project truck to it, and then they'll give us an update. So we actually have a regular call or contact with our Tech Dot team that we work with very closely. The thing that is the most maddening about our 620 traffic lights is the high school traffic. So the high school traffic is an issue until the next couple of years when the new high school gets built on Flint Rock. The high school traffic could also be largely helped if they would build the second access road into the high school that was approved under the bond. But again, that's it, that's the elected officials of the school board need to tell the staff to build the road, even if it inconveniences six people in Travis County, because it will convenience 50,000 people driving through the city of Lakeway every day. And so that's where we are on that.
Last question. Let's go with this one. What are your thoughts on engaging volunteer groups for them to be able to kind of supplement some of the work that the city does? It wasn't that specific, but...
No, that's fine. So the city of Lakeway was largely built on volunteer service. Every person that you've seen up here tonight is seeking to just be a volunteer in one capacity or another. Every board and commission or committee is made up of volunteers. Sometimes volunteers do great work. Sometimes volunteers create projects for the city staff to do. And so we have to walk a fine line between having a volunteer committee telling you that we can help you do something, and a volunteer committee coming forward saying, "Hey, I have a pet rock, and I'd like to do this, and all we need is the staff and you to spend money." So that's an issue, that's what we know. We have actually ended some volunteer committees because they've come forward and said, "We have completed our role." The best example is, in the first six months when I was mayor, Parks and Recs came forward and said, "We have completed our role." Other committees, committees helping to plan 4th of July, helping to plan Veterans Day and Memorial Day, were spending appropriated funds without city approval. And we had to bring that back under control to make sure that the city was supervising the expenditure of all funds as required by Texas law. And some people thought that was a move to hurt volunteerism, and they didn't quite understand that it was a move directed to following the law on supervision of appropriated funds.
Man, if this question hasn't been asked of me by 500 people that just come up to me, as head of ceremony, I bet Tom would like to do things differently than he's done over the last two years. Pulling back and calling back the volunteer efforts and hurting our community in that way is one thing that I will definitely do differently than the mayor. The standing military committee supported Allen Babin in his last election, and as a result of that, the mayor pulled back his support and pulled away from their efforts to manage Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And that just shouldn't happen. And I know recently, the mayor has given it back to them, and I appreciate that, and they appreciate that. Volunteerism is the lifeblood of this city. It saves us so much money. I want to bring back volunteerism, I want to amplify it, and I want to work with all of you to support that the best we can at the city level. Thank you.
So thinking about volunteer...
So thinking about volunteerism, I want to give the mayor and the mayor's aide a round of applause to him. I will, the mayor, I will declare that this forum has been a success regardless of all the light issues. Thank you for coming. Now, if there's still beer and scotus and water over here, please help me, my little...